We'll call the meeting to order of Tuesday, October 8th, 2013. Commissioner Campbell will not be with us this morning. His mother passed away and we extend to him our sincere sympathy. The first item is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve with the addition.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Do any citizens to be heard on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay. And I'll pay the bills.
Move to approve. Second?
All in favor, say aye. Bills are paid. Approval of minutes for September 17th and 20th.
I'll move approval.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bill. They are approved. Ms. Sevigny, good morning.
Good morning.
2014 United Way campaign and could you introduce the young lady with you?
Yes, I have. Sherri Thompson, President of the United Way, here to speak.
Oh, well, Sherri. How do you spell Sherri?
S-H-E-R-R-I.
The right way.
Well, that's the way I spell it. I just wanted to start off by saying that the goal for this year for the county employees is $17,000. That's a about 4% increase over last year. We started the campaign and we're doing it a little bit differently this year and so departments are seeing their pledge forms at different times throughout. We're going to try and get it wrapped up by next week or the week after, so I'll be able to report to you after that what our final goal was. There was new changes with the funding this year for United Way, so that's why I brought her here to explain it because she can do a much better job than I. So I'll let you explain the new, what you're trying to do with United Way.
Great, thank you, Kimberly. Good morning, everyone. It's nice to be with you this morning. What Kimberly is talking about is that oftentimes when people think about the United Way of Cass-Clay, they think about our annual fundraising campaigns in which we raise millions of dollars and we reinvest those dollars into local nonprofits that are trying to help people in need. And while that's still the case, there's been a lot of changes from a strategic level over the last several years and that's what we really highlighted at our recent campaign in which we had about 700 people that attended. So when we think about Cass and Clay County, we always hear about how good life is here. We hear about our thriving economy, we hear about the growing businesses, we hear about the nonprofits that are partnering, some of the lowest unemployment in the country, some of the highest per capita. And the truth of the matter is, life is pretty good for many of us that are here and yet because of my position every day as the President for the United Way of Cass-Clay, I talk to nonprofit leaders and they all ask me one thing and it's not for money. What they ask me to do is try to raise the awareness for individuals and families that are living at the poverty level in our two-county region. So while life is good, we have a lot of folks that are living in poverty here. And when I talk about a lot of folks, I mean that we have 13% of our population in our two-county region that are living at the federal poverty level. So the federal poverty level for a family of four is $23,550 a year. Furthermore, we know that we have 6,000 kids in our metro school districts that are living at the federal poverty level. So there's a lot of stats both to indicate how good our economy is, but we also have a lot of stats that are raising some real issues for us, specifically in the social services utilization when we take a look at it from that perspective. So I want to share just a few more of them with you and then I want to talk to you a little bit about United Way's new way of working to address them. We know that we have approximately 36,000 kids in our two-county region between the ages of birth and age 12, or when you would need to have childcare, presumably for families that would want it. We also know that we have about 18,000 slots that we need, that we have children for, but that we don't have any childcare for. Childcare is not just a parent issue, childcare is a workforce development issue, childcare is an education issue. And we know right now that we don't have enough childcare to meet the need that's also out there. You also may know this, that one out of five kids in Clay County is on SNAP, or the Food Subsidy Program. One out of five. That's pretty staggering. Furthermore, we know that 54% of renters are unable to afford a two-bedroom apartment in Clay County. The nonprofit leaders that I talked to are right. It is a thriving economy, but we have an issue of poverty here. We have 28,124 people that are living in poverty. So what are we going to do about that and why, for those of us that aren't living in poverty, should we care about that? Well furthermore, United Way has done a lot of research with the Chamber of Commerce and with the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Corporation and we recognize that our population is going to double by 2030, 2040, right? So in our two-county region, we have six homeless shelters and I, like you, don't want to build more homeless shelters, we don't want to build more food pantries, we don't want to have more reactive services. So what are we going to do about it? United Way has been in this community for 86 years, investing in nonprofit programs that help people in need. But we needed to be much more specific about what does that mean, what is that strategy? And so we're going to focus in two areas. The first one, we've always funded and we always will fund, and that's four basic needs areas. So what I mean by basic needs is emergency shelters, transitional housing, food banks, programs for vulnerable individuals, and programs that help keep us safe. So senior citizen population that's growing, individuals with developmental and emotional, mental and physical disabilities. We've always funded in those four areas and we always will. But we want to make sure that we can begin to slow that cycle of poverty that our nonprofit leaders are talking about. Because if we don't do that, we know that as our population grows, we're going to have to fund more and more of those responsive services. So our team at United Way over the last couple of years has really been looking into, what do you do when you have an issue of poverty? How do you start to slow that? And research tells us, local, regional, and national research tells us, that if we invest in the area of education, we can slow the cycle of poverty. So we brought together the educators and we brought together the nonprofits that work with youth, we told them all about the statistics of poverty in our community and so many of them told us about it, to be perfectly candid. They were the ones that were raising the issue to our attention. And we said to them, if we want to slow the cycle of poverty by focusing on the area of education, what's one thing that we can do? And they all told us about, we need to shrink the academic achievement gap. And what I mean by that is, we have reading and math scores that all of our students participate in and across all the school districts. And they talked to us about, there's a gap in reading and math scores between all kids and kids that are socio-economically disadvantaged. And we need to make sure that we can shrink that gap. We need to make sure that kids can start at kindergarten and graduate high school on time and find that right, appropriate, post-secondary education for them. Because if we can do that, they can go out and be a part of our working economy. They can become income-stable. If they're income-stable, we don't need more homeless shelters, we don't need more food pantries, we don't need more social services utilization. So this group has been meeting for the last year now and we've said to them, what are we going to do if we indeed want to focus on closing the academic achievement gap with the greater goal of slowing the poverty issue? And they came up with four areas that they wanted us to focus on. And United Way has made a $1.4 million investment across 26 nonprofits that are all working to those same shared measurements. So United Way has always been in the area of investing in basic needs programs and we've been investing in educational programs for the last decade. But what's new about this new way of working is we've all started with the same understanding that while each of you may be providing a different service, we're all driving towards that same goal. And that is making sure that we're closing the academic achievement gap. And so that's a fundamental shift in how we work and what we invest in. And we think that's really important, that we can get out to the community and have them understand, why are we making those strategic changes? Why are we working with these nonprofits and with these educators in this new way? And the truth of the matter is, we're doing it because we want to slow the cycle of poverty. And that's a huge goal. And it certainly won't happen because United Way's involved. It's going to happen because we create an awareness and we partner with the for-profit community, we partner with the not-for-profit community, we partner with individuals in the public sector, and we all work to the same goal. But if we're going to do that, we have to understand how it impacts all of us. So truth be told, I meet with people from time to time and they say, Sherri, I'm not in the poverty level, how does this affect me? Or childcare isn't an issue for me, renting isn't an issue for me, why should I care? Well, we should care because it's good for all of us in our community. But the truth of the matter is, if you want to take a look at the kids that are sitting in the classroom alongside of your child that might not be in poverty, we know that academic achievement and success in school is equally dependent upon your own child's socioeconomic status as much as it is the socioeconomic level of all kids that are in that classroom. So poverty affects all of us, whether it's social services utilization, whether it's rental, whether it's growing our businesses. We want to lower that 13% of poverty in this community. We absolutely believe that it can be done. I could, you know, take lots of time this morning and tell you about anecdotally the stories that we're hearing from our educators and our nonprofits. But I would just welcome any of you to contact me or contact our office to learn more about what it is that we're doing. But the United Way campaign this year and for the years to come are much more strategic. We're going to focus in the area of education, income stability, and mental health because we believe that by investing our resources in those areas, we can slow poverty and at the same time, we will always invest in those basic needs program. I would encourage any of you that would like more information to go out to our website. We've got links of all the stats that I shared with you this morning briefly and many, many more with all the appropriate sites and also more information about the specific programs and the specific collaboratives that we're going to be investing in, in those areas. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come and share briefly with you a little bit about the strategic changes that we are investing in, when Kimberly and her team goes out and raises $5.2 million for us this year. So, her along with many, many others. So, any questions this morning?
Any questions for Sherri, gentlemen?
Yeah, one on the education thing. I understand you're working with Head Start?
Yes.
And in Clay County as well as?
In Cass, both, yes.
And what's the goal there? What do you, is it going to be a long-term commitment or a one-year commitment or what kind of commitment do you make for Head Start?
Great question. We have for many, many years invested in what we refer to as pre-K readiness and Head Start is a rock-solid program when it comes to pre-K readiness. Really getting the children ready to be successful when they start kindergarten. And so our commitment to Head Start is longstanding and will continue to be longstanding. Yes, you're welcome. Any other questions?
Sherri?
Thank you so much. You are very articulate.
Thank you for being, for letting me be here this morning with you.
Kim, Kimberly, thank you.
Thank you.
Other forms this year, didn't you, sometimes I think it said what we gave last year. This form didn't, I think, this year?
No, it didn't. I can look it up for you though and let you know. I'll let you know.
It's helpful to know so we can increase our giving a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is request to fill office services supervisor position. Rhonda, are you going to speak for Rhonda?
Excuse me?
Are you?
Brian's first, is it solid waste?
Solid waste first.
I'm sorry, okay, Brian. Solid Waste Position Manager. Brian Bird. And Brian, would you also like to take the agenda addition at this time?
Yes, I would. And maybe, maybe we should just do that first. What you have is a handout and what is your addition today is Stephen Larson, the West Central Regional Juvenile Center Director, has been the past president of his association on the national scale for, or on the statewide scale, I should say, for, I think it was a two-year term. And this year, the sitting chair could not make it to this conference, so he has been asked last week on a short notice basis to attend this on their behalf and they will pay for his travel and things. So he just needs authorization by this board to travel out of state.
So, all in favor, say aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Boy, Sherri was really an excellent presenter, wasn't she? She first.
I couldn't take notes as fast as she was talking.
I know, boy. And really excited about the project. That's great. Well, Mr. Chair, what I'm here today is to ask this board to fill a vacant position that is coming up at the end of the month. And Kathy Meyer has been with the county, I think, like 24 years now and has been manager of solid waste for, oh, I think it's around nine years or something like that since Jean left. Maybe, maybe it's in that area anyway. And we've been looking at what we need to do there as far as filling it. Kathy has a vast amount of education and knowledge in the solid waste arena and we do also call on a consultant engineering department that helps us with designing the landfill and just coordinating with MPCA and just a variety of different things. Because landfills are very, very complicated these days. You have to put in linings, you have to watch the leachate, you have to burn off the gas. It's just a, it's a pretty complex system. It's not just transferring garbage from one point to another. It's, it's, it's pretty detailed. And what we've done is, as I know I met with Commissioner Everett and Commissioner Campbell who sit on the solid waste advisory committee, and we talked about the path forward, where are we going to go with this? And right now, the position reports to planning and zoning, Tim Magnuson. And there's just so much work in that solid waste arena with recycling and the household hazardous waste. And I personally feel that it's too much to expect him to know a whole lot about along with the environmental issues and the planning and zoning issues and different things as well. So we talked about, do we leave it, leave it there? Do we, we look at maybe the highway department? I guess frankly, I've been a little bit of a fan of that technology and soil compaction and everything being associated with engineers and we have two engineers in our highway department. But we talked about that and realized that we just bonded for $10.6 million. We have a lot of roadwork that's going on in the next few years. This might not be the best timing to make that switch out there either, as busy as they are. We talked about, do we contract with a firm? The firm that does a lot of work for us, but we really felt we needed someone in-house to establish parameters and different things for the projects that are needed to be done. So we really had a good conversation and certainly I'll welcome any comments that Commissioner Everett has in regards to this too. And we, what we kind of decided to recommend to the board was a standalone department that is led by an engineer and reports to the county board and supervised by the county administrator. So that's what we're here today, to ask your approval and permission to go ahead and fill that position with the job description including an engineer. And part of that job description is probably going to include 10 to 15% of time to be expected to be spent at highway because with their water runoff and water issues, they could certainly use that extra time as well. Now, this may elevate the position somewhat on our pay scale. Kathy was at step nine, so we probably don't feel it would be any additional cost per salary-wise, at least in the beginning. But we really feel that there will be some savings. We're not doing this necessarily for the savings of it, but we feel there will be probably savings in the consulting arena if we do employ an engineer or when we employ an engineer, if that is your wishes to do so. So certainly entertain any questions this time or?
Brian, would it be a civil engineer or what?
Yes, civil engineer or, or yes, or environmental. I understand that they, a civil engineer also can have a, I'll say, a double major in civil engineering and environmental engineering.
And John, this has been through committee and approved?
Yeah, it has. And I, we really think that there's a number of functions that the consultants now do that the, an engineer in this position could do and that it could save us some money in the long run, but.
And Dave, you've been involved in this discussion too and meets your approval?
Yes.
Needs your approval? It needs your approval, Dave?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Brian? What are your wishes?
How available are engineers to fill a spot like this? Is that going to be an issue? Are there a lot of people in that market?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Whelan, we did have that discussion that we're kind of fortunate here with sitting right next to NDSU, that they're graduating a lot of engineers and, you know, if it was just for Dave's sake in the room, I'd make a comment about engineers. We know, we know that's not the truth. They're skilled people. I have visited with people with the salary range that, could we get someone that would be well-qualified for this position? And they feel they can. And, you know, even, even if they're fairly new to the game, although in discussion, I mean, it's good that you bring that up because we're discussing it with Dave and Nathan the other day. A engineer in order to, if they come out of college, I was thinking we could hire a fairly new one and that would be just really up on solid waste and burying garbage and different things. And they informed me that an engineer has to work under the supervision of another engineer for four years prior to getting their license. Would that be?
That's right on.
That's the correct terminology. So we'll have to be, I don't want to say a little crafty, but we'll have to keep things, lines of communication open there though, so that we, and hopefully be, remain flexible if we do end up having to have them be involved somewhat so that we get the proper person in there that has the right background and the right interest. I think there's a lot of things that can be done in solid waste. I'm kind of excited about that topic. I know some people say, well, gee, you just take garbage off the curb and you bury it, you know? Well, we have to look at many, many different ways to quit burying so much garbage. We're, it's a time that we're getting involved with the perm incinerator and that's a big deal. They want to bring some fines over to Clay County's landfill and use for daily cover. And we've got an $800,000 methane system out there to burn off gas that needs to be studied and revised and kept up with. So there's a lot of things to do in that arena. I think it's pretty, and recycling, I think there's a, there's a huge world out there that we can do a better, maybe improve some rates in regards to what we do there. We continually look at that, but there's, there's so many things that need to be looked at.
John?
If we get applicants that are already certified, have that four years experience and are certified already, then we're, we're home free in that category.
In that category.
If we hire somebody younger that hasn't got that, then we might have to work out some kind of an arrangement with highway department so that they could be supervised by, by our engineers and see if we can make that work somehow.
Are we looking at moving any other duties to this position then or just take over, or are they just looking over to take over the retired position and continue on with that? Are we moving anything else over there? Or, I mean, would that be a plan to move anything else into their duties?
Well, I think simply the stuff that the, that we now contract out, that we hire consultant for, some of those things hopefully can be added to the, you know? But I don't think there'd be any issue other than?
I mean, I don't want to make any savings at all in any other department.
Other than that, I think we can expect that maybe there'd be, there'd be some time, maybe 10% or something, that could be assigned to the highway department to help them with stormwater issues or certain specialty interests or issues that they're dealing with. But that remains to be seen as to if, whether there's time for that.
And just as an example, we have paid an engineering consultant and very valuable information to obtain, but some years we've gone as high as $450,000 to an engineering firm. We've spent in the last 10 years, $2.7 million to an engineering firm. And not to say that they haven't needed to do that work because MPCA and all the licensing and permitting and the linings for the, for the landfill are very, very technical stuff. But do we hope to suppress some of those costs and do them in-house? Yes, we do. Yes, we do. So.
Do we have a motion?
I would move that we, that we advertise this position as listed here.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Porter, request to fill office services position and Rhonda Porter, our social services director. She's not online. How are you doing?
I'm good, thank you. Okay, I am here to request filling my office support supervisor position. This is Cheryl Schwant is retiring. We've kind of known this was coming and she finally gave her, her notice, which we've been wanting to avoid. But after 30-some years of being with us, she's going to be retiring and so I'm basically requesting to fill her position as-is. She really is an administrative assistant to me. She supervises 10 office support specialists throughout the agency and she does a variety of things for the agency, pretty much manages a lot of the administrative issues for the agency as a whole. I do not see putting these duties under anyone else or how we could manage without this position, so. She, this position is at a grade 16. She is at the top of that grade after the years that she's been here. So I do anticipate internal interest in this position. So what I'd like to do is post as soon as possible and that will take some process with the merit system. But my goal would be is if, if we could fill the position before Cheryl actually left on December 20th, that would be great. Because if there, if it is an internal promotion, then we would have backfilling to do, so.
What are your wishes, gentlemen?
Just want to comment first about, the board used to know, back when we had a welfare board, we knew Cheryl very well because she met with us once a month.
Right.
And so on. Since that structure's changed a bit, you know, she, she does her job there and we don't, we only, only see you. So, so many of the newer commissioners probably don't know Cheryl that well, but she's been very, very effective, very efficient and has done just a super job for us. She'll be hard to fill, fill her shoes, but?
She's very hard to fill.
We need to, we need to start that process. So I would move that we proceed with trying to fill the position that Cheryl Schwant is vacating.
Second? Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Motion is carried.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Would that motion also include backfilling?
Yes, as you have, Craig.
Okay, thank you.
Craig Whitney, good morning. Craig is the CEO of the Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo Chamber of Commerce and he's going to give us an update regarding the man-flying mission for North Dakota Air National Guard. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As you said, my name is Craig Whitney. I'm the president and CEO of the Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo Chamber. I'm here to, here today in my capacity as Chair of the Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo Air National Guard Support Group. This is a group of individuals made up of business leaders in the community as well as retired military individuals that was really formed back in early 2000 when we went through the last base realignment commission, the last BRAC. In 2005, the group was formed together to fight on behalf of the National Guard activities at Hector International Airport. And we reformed the group again about a year and a half ago and I believe I was here along with Dick Walsted a little over a year ago and informed the commission that we were then putting the group back together, that we really had two short-term goals, or, excuse me, we had really a short-term goal and a long-term goal. The short-term goal being protecting a man-flying mission at Hector. As we knew that we were going to be threatened by the proposed cuts in the military, you may recall that back in the 2000 BRAC, what came out of that, the 2005 BRAC is, is the guard were flying F-15s. And it was proposed that, that they would get a new aircraft that really was just completed in the last year and a half, two years ago, the C-27. And while those planes were being manufactured and designed, the guard was promised what they call a bridge mission, which was a C-21. A C-21 is essentially a small Lear jet that was used primarily? A C-21 is essentially a small Lear jet that was used primarily to ferry around high-ranking officials and that's really what has been being flown at Hector ever since then. About two years ago, a year and a half ago, the C-27s began to be completed and they were scheduled to arrive about a year ago. But as the defense cuts hit, by the federal government, sequestration hit, and then of course we all know what's going on today, the Air Force decided that those C-27s would be retired, which of course we found was quite odd because you're building at least 38 new, very expensive airplanes that were to replace the old C-130s would be retired to the boneyard before they were even flown. So we then knew that our short-term mission was to protect a manned flying mission. So we commenced by raising some funds in which the county participated and were able to hire a Washington DC lobbyist and for about the last year, year and a half, had some significant efforts to protect the C-21. And unfortunately, about a month and a half or two months ago, that we essentially lost the first round of that fight and the C-21s were retired and the last plane was flown out of here. So where we are today is obviously continuing with sequestration and now with the government shutdown, our group is continuing to work with our Washington DC lobbyist to ensure that we get some form of a flying mission back. In the meantime, we work to support the intelligence mission that the guard has received and will begin in the process, the next few months of phasing that in. But we believe in working with our lobbyist in Washington that there is an effort and I think our main hope is still tied to the fact that there was a commission about nine months ago that was appointed by the president that is made up of nine individuals and at least two or three of them are retired National Guard people. And we believe that there has been a shift in the discussions in Washington DC that has recognized that both the guard and the reserve across the entire country is in fact a component that needs to be looked at. It's a cost-saving effort for the government. And so we believe that when this commission offers their report, which I think is due in February of next year, that there could be some changes that would then afford us the opportunity to get a flying mission back here in Fargo-Moorhead. So our efforts continue and that really, as I mentioned in the beginning, was our short-term goal. Our long-term goal is we do believe that ultimately there will be another BRAC and nobody knows exactly when that is. And certainly not having a flying mission does perhaps make our fight even harder. But we are committed to it. As I said, this is people from the business community, retired military that are really committed to this effort. And without the support of local organizations and the counties and cities like yourself, we would not have been able to have, I think, the fight that we have had so far and we will continue to do that.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions for Mr. Whitney? Brian?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell was not able to be here today, but he wanted to know, he wanted to let the commission know and Mr. Whitney that he sincerely supports the mission of the guard and wanted you guys to know that, that he supported the last contribution to it from the county and wanted to know that the, wanted to listen to the update too, but also wanted to know his support for continuing the effort.
Well, thank you. And again, we do very much appreciate your support.
Okay. Craig, thanks so much for the update.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presence here today. Mr. Johnson, you are on. State auditor, Robert Johnson, is going to review our 2012 audit report with us.
Okay. You're just okay. That's good. There you go. I don't have any more for you.
What's that?
Need one more?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we got a leftover.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I thought just before I get started here, I'm here just to present a short summary of the annual financial audit. But before I get started, I just wanted to kind of thank Clay County staff for assisting with the audit. This year, we got in much earlier than we have in the last couple of years and we really appreciate that. We had difficulties with one of our other clients in getting in when we were scheduled to be there. So when we called up Lori and Stacy, they were more than willing to let us come in in Starkley County earlier this year, so.
What can we say to those ladies?
Yeah, so we just want to make sure that they're aware of that, that we do really appreciate that, so. I've provided two handouts to you today. The first handout is dealing with a lot of the financial information about the county. The second one is the schedule of findings and question costs. And I'll just kind of run through those like I have in previous years. The first handout, as I've mentioned, is all the financial information. The very top part of that handout is government-wide financial information. Then we'll move down into talking a little bit about cash balances and then move down to talking a little bit about some of the fund balances of Clay County. The government-wide net position at December 31st, 2012 was $116,367,000. That's up about $3,800,000 from the previous year. The increases are basically in net invested in capital assets. Those went up primarily because you had increased infrastructure, you had some other capital assets that increased and the debt related to those capital assets also went down for 2012. Restricted declined in 2012. That was due mainly to restricted for governmental activities, about $1,372 went down for capital projects and a decline in restricted for the business type activities, about $963,000. That was for closure, post-closure care costs. And then your unrestricted went up about $2,562,000 in 2012. That's kind of the net effect of the other changes and looking at your fund balances, your fund balances, at least for the three major funds increased during the year, so that's what kind of accounts for that, so. Any questions on government-wide? Okay.
We missed Kevin being here. He understands your language.
Okay. I'm going to bounce down to the cash balances. At December 31st, 2012, the general fund had a cash balance of $7,340,000. The state auditor recommends you have sufficient cash balance in the general fund to sustain six months of operation. And the main reason for that recommendation is that your general fund relies much heavier on levies than the other funds. In your case, you have about 69, almost 70% of that recommendation, so you're a little bit lower cash balance in your general fund than the state auditor would recommend. I'd like to do a comparison with some of the other counties in the surrounding area so you know how you sit in relation to some of the other counties. So I selected Norman County, Wilkin County, Menominee, Becker and Otter Tail for the comparison. And that ratio of six 12 annual expenditures to the cash balance, the average out of those five counties is about 151% of our recommendation. So you're quite a bit lower than what the counties in the surrounding area are caring for cash in the general fund. The Roden Bridge Fund, you had a cash balance of $1,098,000. That rule that we've mentioned before does not apply to the other funds because you have funds coming in throughout the year on a more consistent basis, but I still put in the ratios. That's about 25% of the six 12 annual expenditures and compared to the counties in the surrounding area, they've got about a 60% average. For your social service fund, the cash balance was $7,934,000. That's about 98% of that ratio. And in the surrounding areas, those five counties have about 120% of what we have. So in all three categories, actually, the Clay County is running a little bit lower cash balances than the counties in the surrounding areas, so. Any questions on the cash balances?
You're saying that we should have around 50% of it, right?
For the general fund. And that's just, you know, that's just a recommendation mainly so that you're insured that you're going to have cash on hand in the general fund to pay all your expenditures until the tax levies come in.
But you haven't accounted for our internal service funds.
That is not included in that.
Most counties don't have that, do they?
No, most of the counties that I audit do not have internal service funds. If you accounted for the internal service fund, your total cash balance between the general fund and internal service fund, I was ready for you, John.
That's good. Same question every year.
Pretty much. The cash balance would have been $9,357,000 and that comes out to about 87% of that recommendation. So if you consider the internal service fund as part of the general fund, which we typically want because the internal service fund supports several different funds, Roden Bridge would be one of them, that's probably one of the funds that has the most capital equipment that's purchased out of it, but yeah, you would be about 87%, so then that would be just shy of the state auditor's recommendation, so.
Having a lot of money in the service store isn't that great of a deal either. I mean, it's nice to have that, but is that...
Correct, correct. If you've got huge, huge balances, of course, the taxpayers are going to wonder why are you building up these balances and what's the necessity for having all these balances? So, yeah, you want reasonable balances for those tough times that come along, but you also, you know, have to keep taxpayers in mind. And I think Clay County does a very good job of keeping the taxpayers in mind. As we move down to the fund balances, I can explain that a little bit better. And just for your sake, I'm not sure that you, are you familiar with the differences between the cash balances and the fund balances?
I'm getting there. It's going to be a while.
The fund balances include all the other things that, you know, cash is cash, basically. It's the cash you have on hand. The fund balance includes other accruals like your payables, your receivables, those types of things. In the governmental funds at the fund level, it doesn't include long-term type items like infrastructure, you know, your major capital assets and debt and those types of things, but it does include receivables, payables and things like that, so. And fund balance is typically a better measurement than the cash balance of how your fund is doing. Okay?
I'm sure I need about a week's class of that, but...
If there's no questions on cash balances, I should point out that your cash balances in all three major funds did increase during 2012. Your cash balance in the general fund went up a little over $1 million. Roden Bridge Fund went up about $892,000 and your social service fund went up about $1,808,000. So you've had improvements in all three of those funds in 2012 as far as the balances. I'm going to move down to the fund balances. And again, the state auditor does have some recommendations on fund balances and the recommendations are based on the unrestricted fund balance, so I'll go through all the unrestricted fund balance information first and then I'll tell you a little bit about total fund balance changes too. Your unrestricted fund balance in the general fund at December 31st, 2012 was $6,050,000. The state auditor recommends that you have an unrestricted fund balance of at least five 12 annual expenditures and fall somewhere within the range of 35% to 50% of operating revenues. Now, that doesn't mean that if you're outside of those ranges, sometimes you want to be outside of those ranges if you're, for example, accumulating funds for a big construction project coming up. You may want your balances larger than that. So it's just a recommended range for you to stay, you know, to consider and if you're way outside of those ranges, you should be able to explain what your purposes for being outside of those ranges are. Your general fund had unrestricted fund balance of $6,050,000. That's about 71% of that five 12 annual expenditure, so it's a little bit lower than what's recommended by the state auditor and it's about 27% of your operating revenues. So it's falling below that range of 35% to 50% of operating revenues. Your Roden Bridge Fund actually had a deficit balance at December 31st, 2012 of $785,000. It's a big improvement from the previous year, but it's still in a deficit balance. So obviously, you're not near the range recommended by the state auditor there. The social service fund had an unrestricted fund balance of $7,971,000. That's about 118% of the five 12 annual expenditures and about 46% of your operating revenues. So that one's actually a little bit above recommended amounts. I should point out that the recommendation is not on a fund-by-fund basis, it's the general fund and all special revenue funds combined. And here, we're just presenting three of your funds, so. Any questions on the unrestricted fund balance amounts?
What do we come up with if we average all those together?
Well, again, I'm kind of one step ahead of you here, John. If you take all the general fund and special revenue funds combined, you're sitting at about 67% of that five 12 annual expenditures and you're sitting at about 26% of operating revenues. So if you took, you know, all the funds that we've recommended that be combined and use that comparison, that's where you're sitting, so. Your total fund balance for the general fund at December 31st, 2012 was $8,698,000 and that's up about $1,055,000 from the previous year. Roden Bridge Fund has a deficit total fund balance of $551,560. That's improved $1,749 from the previous year. And your social service fund has fund balance of $8,030,000 and that's an improvement of about $1,049,000 from the previous year. Any questions on any of the financial information? Okay. I'm going to move on to the schedule of findings and question costs. Clay County had a number of findings actually that were previously reported in last year's report that have been resolved and that's, you know, that's a good thing. We like to really see that, so. The first page of your schedule of findings and question costs is here because you did have a single audit for 2012. You received over $500,000 with the federal funds, which then requires us as part of our audit procedures to do compliance testing on your federal programs. And so when we submit your package, which we have done, to the federal government, they can look at this first page and they know a lot about what happened during your audit. First of all, your financial statements, we gave you an unmodified opinion. That's a new term this year. It was unqualified in the past. It means the same thing. That's the good opinion. That's the one that you want. Internal controls over financial reporting, we found no material weaknesses during our audit. We did find some things, we call them significant deficiencies. There are things that we think are important enough to put in the report and report to you. There was no non-compliance material to the financial statements noted. Under the federal awards, internal controls over the major programs, as I've mentioned, those we ended up testing because you had a single audit. We didn't find any material weaknesses in your internal controls over those programs. We did have some findings again, so we have, we are reporting some significant deficiencies. And the report issued on compliance with major programs is also unmodified, so that's the good report. So you got clean opinions on both your financial statements and the federal award programs. The programs we tested this year, we had a lot of programs we had to test. One of them is community development block ground. We tested TANF. We tested emergency consistency fund for TANF, child support enforcement, foster care and medical assistance for your single audit requirements this year. The first item that we noted in your report is one that... The first item that we noted in your report is one that's been in there many, many years, it's in virtually every report in the state of Minnesota. It's dealing with segregation of duties, and essentially what this comment is saying is you've got a number of small departments that collect fees, and in those small departments, you may have one individual or two individuals working in those departments, so you can't have proper segregation of duties where you're you're segregating out the record-keeping function from the custody function and the authorization functions. Typically, what happens in these small departments is is one person who collects the fees, they have the custody function, they hang on to the fees, they have the record-keeping function until enough fees have been accumulated, then they're brought over to the treasurer's office and deposited with the county treasurer. And once it hits that point, we believe that you've got good, strong segregation of duties, it's just as the fees are being collected in those smaller departments. We talked with county officials, and they informed us that collecting fees for services at the department level provides a convenience to the customers, which is logical, it's where the services are performed, so it's much, much easier to collect the fees at that service point. So we understand that, we just come out and point out each year that because of the lack of segregation duties, those are the areas where things typically happen. So we want you to be aware of that and continually, you know, provide as much oversight over those few departments as you possibly can. The second item is one that we recorded last year, too, it's dealing with actually network and application password controls. In two thousand eleven, Clay County adopted the new version of the IFS system, the Integrated Financial System, uh, which is a web-based system now. And because of that, the controls that used to be on the AS four hundred as far as password controls, those don't really apply to the web-based applications. Um, so we're just pointing out that you you should really take a look at, um, the password controls not only over the application itself, but over your network to to ensure that you've got good, strong controls to make sure that that application and other applications that that are on your networks are are secure. As I mentioned, we we have mentioned that in the past, uh, I have had a few calls from various organizations asking about IFS, if the I, if it's really an IFS problem, and and IFS has limited password controls, uh, within the application itself, and that's why we're kind of recommending, um, either a change to IFS or an update to the network applications, just to make sure that those those are secure. So it's not necessarily that you have to have IFS changed, but we want to make sure that you go back and analyze those those controls and 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 have one or the other very, very strong.
Is this a problem for everybody who has the IFS?
It is for...
Or is there some phone ways to...
Quite a few of the organizations, um, and it's not just IFS, it's it's any any applications that are on your network. If the application itself doesn't have a a real strong control, we want to make sure that your networks have real strong password controls to make sure that that access is limited. Any questions on that? It's, I'm I'm not saying you got a super big weakness here, it's just something you you do want to go back and and review. Any questions? Okay, the next item is an item, um, that that is new this year. It's dealing with the income maintenance DHS twenty-five fifty reporting. Uh, the programs that we founded, that we were testing at the time, was the TANF program, the child support program, foster care four E, and medical assistance program, so it affects a lot of programs. Um, those programs are all reported in the twenty-five fifty report. Uh, the Minnesota Department of Human Services provides guidance on the completion of the quarterly income maintenance DHS twenty-five fifty report in the DHS bulletins that they put out for you. During our review of the income maintenance twenty-five fifty reporting, we noted that five employees were not properly reported. These employees were reported, uh, in the income maintenance random moment study section A of the quarterly income maintenance DHS twenty-five fifty reports, uh, for two quarters in which they were not identified as participants in the random moment study by the random moment coordinator, so. Essentially, what happened here is there's a timing difference. When Clay County hires a new income maintenance employee, they set them up as a a code to post their time to, and that code goes to section A of the, uh, um, income maintenance DHS twenty-five fifty report. Until those employees are really part of the random moment study, they really shouldn't be reported in that section, and it takes about a quarter or two before those employees, there's a there's a timing difference, before the, uh, random moment coordinator is allowed to get them on the random moment study. So it's just a matter of a couple of quarters where these employees were reported as random moment study employees, and they really weren't random moment study employees, so. Um, what it does is it affects where the funding comes from, um, and and it's all on a ratio of of, you know, percentages of funding, so we don't really, we didn't go through all the process of sitting down and determining exactly what the dollar effects are on that, but we're suggesting that you contact Minnesota Department of Human Services and see what they want you to do as far as as twenty-five fifty reports on that. Any questions on that one? Okay. Then we move into a number of items that we reported last year that that are resolved. In our previous report, we had a comment in there about supervisory review of the twenty-five fifteen, twenty-five fifty-six reports. Uh, beginning in the third quarter of two thousand twelve, the Clay County Social Service Director now does sign off on the twenty-five fifteen and twenty-five fifty reports as having been reviewed, so we've satisfied that requirement. Uh, last year, we had a comment on eligibility determination. While testing compliance with grant requirements for eligibility for the TANF medical assistance, we noted that two of twenty-five cases tested for TANF and two of the twenty-five cases tested for NAA did not contain birth certificates to to document U.S. citizenship. This year, when we went through and did our testing on those on case files for those programs, all the documentation that should have been in the case files was in the case files, so we've resolved that issue for the for two thousand twelve. And then, uh, the next item was subrecipient monitoring. Uh, Clay County passes community development block grants, uh, onto the Clay County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Last year, the county was not able to provide us with sufficient documentation and all necessary monitoring procedures for being applied. For this year, um, you are receiving the reports and, uh, the the reports for reporting the grants and also receiving their receiving their, uh, annual financial statements and noted that they did not have any findings related to federal award programs, so we've resolved that one. And then last year, we had one on allowable cost, cost principles, and reporting for TANF. During our testing quarterly reports submitted to DHS, we noted the supporting documentation for amounts reported for program and administrative expenses includes nurses' salary, mileage, travel, uh, office rent, and expenses for home visitings. What we found is that the expenses for home visiting, uh, was set up as a dollar amount per visit, um, and there really wasn't a basis for that dollar amount per visit, so, um, the resolution basically now has been that, uh, Clay County Public Health resubmitted adjusted invoices for the TANF home visiting programs to the Minnesota Department of Health for the first two quarters of calendar year two thousand twelve based on programmatic costs, so any of the costs that were reported under that grant now we can tie back into the general ledger, so. So we're satisfied that that has been resolved.
There was no money misinportioned or anything like that, I mean?
No, no, it's... It was it was basically the method that that the expenditures were being reported, so they had sufficient expenses. Um, it's just that coming in as an auditor, we couldn't tie any of those expenses back into the general ledger, um, so they've they've chosen a different method rather than just coming up with with a dollar amount per visit as as a basis for expenses. We had a finding that we noted last year that's sim, I mean, we have the same finding essentially this year. It's referring to withholding affidavit for contractors. Uh, you had a project again this year, uh, a contract that was let with Pierce Roofing and Sheep Metal for work on the courthouse and law enforcement center roofs. Final payment was made, and the contractor hadn't provided the county with an IC one thirty-four to to show that they had withheld for their employees. That was actually similar to one that we reported in the previous year. Uh, we talked to the building maintenance supervisor, he's aware of the requirements. Uh, what kind of happened this year is that he thought that the county auditor's office would be the one responsible for getting the IC one thirty fours and not him, so essentially, no one, no one got the IC one thirty fours because of the lack of communication there. And then we had, our final, uh, finding here is dealing with the Roden Bridge deficit fund balance. As of December thirty-first, two thousand twelve, the Roden Bridge fund, uh, had a deficit fund balance of five hundred fifty-one thousand. This is a decrease from the two million, three hundred, uh, thousand from the previous year, so you're working in the right direction, we just couldn't quite resolve that one this year because you you still haven't quite cleared out the deficit fund balance yet, so. Any questions or any any comments, or...
Bob, we want to thank you, this is, for people like me, this is somewhat understandable. And Frank, too.
Okay.
I wanted to just ask Lori if she has any comments about about everything.
Not really, everything came out, uh, the audit went fairly quickly and everything was pretty good.
Again, thank you, we really appreciate working with Clay County, we've got a great staff to work with, so.
Thank you, Bob, we appreciate you being so close to us, right? We appreciate you being on campus here.
Yes, very much so.
Okay, thank you.
Frank, we're going to go to you for committee reports.
And we're done, too, I didn't have a committee this week, so. Chief, I just had a couple of Heartland Trail committee meetings, I went to Greater Minnesota Parks and Trail Coalition meeting for them, and, uh, uh, everything is in good shape there. You know, through the, um, that coalition, uh, sponsored by the, uh, Rural Counties Caucus, uh, we got that funding formula changed, uh, for Parks and Trails in Minnesota, and, uh, so that's moving ahead, and there was a a new, uh, commission, uh, formed to deal with the funding over the next twenty or thirty years, and, uh, the governor appointed people from, uh, different regions in the state, and, uh, Mike Ullott from Warren was appointed by the governor to that, so that's a very positive thing for our area, so. So that was it.
Okay, John?
Uh, yeah, I had a number of things. One, the last Tuesday after our meeting, we had a meeting of the county property committee, where we, as we do each time, go through the list of county-owned property to try to determine if there's any property there that we can get rid of that doesn't, uh, that doesn't, you know, isn't something that's needed for for the county, and, uh, our goal would be to return any property to private ownership that we that we can. Uh, in many cases, the, i- instead, it might go from the county back to cities or or whatever because, uh, uh, there's not, it's not an appropriate thing for private ownership. But, uh, the meeting, I think, went, uh, went well, and we found a few, uh, a few items that we're following up on to to, uh, either s, either sell or or, um, transfer to other other public entities. On Wednesday, there was a, um, a meeting here on video conference in the room, little room right off, uh, our room here, uh, with public health, and it's part of that, uh, federal grant for trying to find ways to consolidate and and collaborate with other public health agencies to increase efficiency and so on of, uh, uh, public, uh, public health. And, uh, it was, uh, one of the elected officials that was asked to be involved, uh, there was also, uh, we had a panel then of, uh, myself and, uh, Commissioner from Monoman County, and also a city councilperson from Bloomington, uh, on this, uh, on this panel, and, and we were able to give recommendations and and suggestions to other entities as to how how they might, uh, work with, uh, public officials to, uh, to to get through some of the changes that they're trying to make. It was it was very interesting, good discussion, I think it went, uh, went quite well. Uh, there will be, uh, this is a follow-up to the to the group that went to, uh, Kansas City last year, uh, to to deal nationwide, to, uh, people all over the country are working on these kinds of things, and there's quite a few. Minnesota by far has the largest delegation, uh, to that group, and we're going to be meeting again in January, uh, to to discuss further the national, national, uh, goals and accomplishments, so. So we we here, uh, because of our our work with the Partnership for Health, the four counties here, we think we we've come quite a ways during this and probably further than most other entities have, so. So we have, uh, some good things to report, I think. Uh, later that, uh, that day, uh, there was a meeting at the Morehead Library, it was a, um, it was a committee hearing, uh, on the issue of, uh, increasing minimum wage from the from the House Representatives, and, uh, they were, they met there at the, in the basement of the, uh, library, and, uh, heard testimony from a number of, uh, people who were concerned about, uh, I mean, both pros and cons, some that, uh, some business people who were concerned about the border, uh, effects of increasing increasing the minimum wage here, and, uh, and others who, uh, mostly social service, uh, groups who were very concerned about, uh, the need for increasing the minimum wage. So it was very interesting discussion, and, uh, and hopefully the legislature can go back with, uh, with some, uh, better ideas of where we stand in this community. I also, on Thursday, uh, attended and participated in the Buffalo Red watershed tour, and we this time covered, uh, we were entirely in Clay County on this tour, and, uh, covered, uh, you know, a lot of areas that dealt with water retention, and, uh, we have some, they've identified in the Buffalo Red, they've identified some some pretty significant, uh, areas, a couple of areas that have over, uh, one at fifteen thousand acre-feet, uh, storage, uh, for retention, uh, one of ten, ten thousand, and, uh, and a couple of smaller ones with with four and five thousand. So it's, uh, you know, they're making headway, and if all of the watershed districts in the in the, uh, Ritter Basin can come up with that kind of numbers, we we will have some pretty good, uh, retention numbers that, uh, that, uh, may may help reduce the need for for the, uh, all of the retention, uh, south of, south of town here. But, uh, we we know that, uh, it's still a complicated issue, and, uh, there's a long ways to go, uh, even though they've been identified, they haven't, uh, haven't secured the permission from landowners and yet, uh, yet, and that's, that'll be coming next. That, I think, is everything.
Thank you, John. On Thursday, October first, Moore Planning Commission, general business, rezoning issues for Horizon Shores were forwarded to the city council, and we okayed a parking issue for Sam Adams Cars at seventeen oh two Main Avenue. This will also go forward to the city council. Thursday, October third, local advisory council for children's mental health. General business and several agency reports, many concerns with all-day kindergarten in the Moore schools, uh, review of, um, the children's mental health work plan for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. The comment regarding all-day kindergarten is not a negative comment, it's at all, it's just, uh, with, um, so many children, um, some space issues and, uh, mental health issues, they're all taking a look at these things, and they're all going forward very well. Right?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just maybe more commentary than anything, it was kind of interesting when you, uh, Commissioner Abert, when you attended that, uh, symposium, let's say, on raising the minimum wage, and you you listened to a presentation from United Way on the volumes of families that we have and the poverty level just in the Morehead and Fargo area, and and, um, I'm not saying wages could solve that, but, uh, it certainly would help in the raising the poverty, uh, issue with within the community, but, and I know it's not that simple, but it's just interesting when you hear both discussion points at the same day. discussion points at the same day. Just an update on the federal shutdown. I had asked Kathy McKay at Public Health and Rhonda Porter from Social Services to give me just a little update, because I know you guys want to keep your ear to the ground on this issue. And what Kathy is reporting, and she received this from the state, that WIC is the big concern. And again, all of you know what WIC is, and it's women and infant children, and it's a food program for nutrition for the infancy. Even though that's funded through the fiscal year of October, or of October 1 through September 30th, they feel that the funding is there to get them through the end of October. So they're keeping their ear to the ground on that. They're going to continue with business as usual in regards to WIC, scheduling appointments for participations, providing WIC services, placing the medical formula orders as needed. And stores have been notified by the state to continue accepting the WIC vouchers until further notice. And if that does stop, you guys are going to probably get some feedback from some clients in regards to that. So just, I guess, realize it's a federal program, and unfortunately, it's one of those things that's taking a hit here. What Rhonda has reported is that they're receiving very little communication from DHS in this regard, but they said that the MinSure and the Affordable Care Act implementation will not be impacted by the federal shutdown. I think you guys are all aware of that, that that's moving forward with signups and a lot of inquiries in regards to it. And it says, goes on further, this is from the state, says, "We are uncertain at this point what will happen if the shutdown were to continue beyond October. DHS staff are closely monitoring developments and receiving information from the federal program representatives. As the shutdown continues, we will provide you with additional information on program funding and plans." So, you know, it's just a time of uncertainty, and with every week that goes by, it gets a little scarier with some of the programs. And I know a lot of people don't necessarily concern themselves, but when you're in the public health business and the social service businesses like the county's, it's really an important issue. Commissioner Everett reported very well on the county-owned property. In addition to that, though, there will be a couple policies brought forward from that committee in regards to, I don't want to say trespassing, but camping on public-owned property. We've added a lot of properties with the flood buyouts. There's hunting issues, there's camping issues and things. So we feel we need to bring a policy forward that the sheriff's office can enforce. Attended some fire safety. It sponsored some fire extinguisher training. And the Moorhead Fire Department was gracious enough to come over and put that on. And I think it's really helpful, helpful in the workplace, it's helpful in the home environment, how to use an extinguisher properly, and to realize that you can operate one and keep your calm head about it. And then I also want to thank you for the opportunity to send, to attend the Minnesota Association of County Administrators Conference, which I did on Thursday and Friday. And some of the topics were driving employment engagements. They were, dealt with communications and managing energetic and productive employees as well as trying to improve the quality of service of the less motivated ones. Julie Ring, the new executive director of AMC, was there to speak about the future of AMC and the direction that she's receiving from the board. We had a presentation on the Fair Labor Standards Act dealing with employee classifications. And then the property, the new property tax called the PRISMs. It's a Minnesota property tax system that is changing a little bit. And this was just more or less an overview of what it was dealt with, and Nancy would certainly have more details on that. And then we finished up with a presentation on the Affordable Care Act and how counties are affected and the concerns there. So, and then, other than that, personnel evaluations and things. So with that, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
All right. Ryan?